Dear citizens of Pulaski and to whom it may concern, many are aware of the events that occurred at the 2010 Chamber of Commerce Chili Cook-Off where County Commissioner Terry Harwell physically attacked me upon the command of his wife, City Councilmember Vicki Harwell, while I was taping the many different booths that were using open flame cooking devices for their chili. I had documented similar things at other events. At the time, I had a business license for a production company in the city of Pulaski. I own property and live in the area. I have had local laws and the 2006 International Fire Code that the state of Tennessee and Pulaski are under arbitrarily enforced on my business by then-mayor and current economic development head Dan Spear when I opened and was promoting my restaurant, Punkin Blues Cafe. After Commissioner Harwell's attempted intimidation with the use of his elected position, physical attack, hate speech, and defaming remarks, Commissioner Harwell continued his attack by throwing water on me, all of which Mrs. Harwell denies to the police in the audio you are about to hear. Because of the continued attacks and threats by an anonymous poster on a local blog and statements that were made in the anonymous attacks, I obtained all evidence from the investigation conducted by the police in regards to the assault. Although I have had the evidence, for a few months, it was only last month that I was able to listen to Vicki Harwell's statements to the police in which she goes out of her way to defame me and make such absurd claims that I can only bring them to the public so you can see the honesty of this elected official. In this audio, you will hear statements by Mrs. Harwell that I physically shoved her and another woman, that I have stalked her and her family the better part of the summer, that I followed her around and harassed her when she was working in an election, that I edited the videotape to change the content, and that someone put me up to come into her booth to destroy her campaign, all in an attempt to have me charged with assault after they filed a complaint with the Pulaski Police Department. You can see that Terry Harwell is listed as the victim in the report. All her statements to these accounts are simply lies to try to justify Terry's and her own actions. In my opinion, these are not people who deserve the privilege of holding public offices, and had they not been related to District Attorney Mike Bottoms, it is my opinion justice may have been served. After interviewing witnesses and viewing the raw footage they downloaded directly from my camera, the police found there was no reason to go forward with any charges against me and advised the District Attorney's Office to go forward with the charges against Commissioner Harwell. However, five minutes before I was to testify before the grand jury, I was threatened by the pro temp prosecutor, District Attorney Dan Alsobrooks, who District Attorney Mike Bottoms requested be involved in the case. I was told if I tried to go forward with official oppression or official misconduct charges against Commissioner Harwell, he would block everything from going forward. He told me he had wasted hours driving down for this piddly little case, and at one time he told me it was the lowest form of assault equivalent to a man striking his wife. I was allowed to go forward because the grand jury foreman overheard the heated exchange. I do not believe I testified well and overheard Terry and the grand jury joking around after his testimony, so I knew I would not get all twelve jury members to vote yes, which is what I needed to go forward. When I tried to appeal and take it back to the grand jury in a different session, which was my right, it was blocked by both Bottoms and Alsobrooks. My faith in our criminal system vanished after this event because, in my opinion, it allows criminals to walk if they know the right people. Now Terry is still a commissioner, serving on the Ethics Committee, was hired into a nice position in the Financial Management Office, even though there is a lot of question concerning his education and qualifications for the position, as well as the application period being cut short. So it seems to me our government endorses this behavior. As far as Mrs. Harwell's accusations toward my character and actions, all of what she states is untrue with the exception I do feel the actions of former Mayor Dan Spear, the City Council which she was a part of, and others in the city administration did affect the ability for my business to market products I offered and be competitive with all other businesses in the area offering the same products and services. I promise that more about their actions will come out in the near future. Councilmember Harwell will state that I should act like an adult and come to the City Council meetings and address my grievances to all members. I say she, the mayor, and the City Council should uphold their oath of office to protect all citizens' constitutional rights. It is on public record my attempts at work session meetings to have my complaints heard only to be silenced or ushered behind closed doors so my statements will not be on record. Does Mrs. Harwell not remember in 2008 when I came to a work session meeting and asked the City Council to overturn the ordinance that banned businesses who operated on the square and one block off who had an on-premise beer permit from advertising their products when the state law and constitution clearly states they have that right? I guess Mrs. Harwell does not remember making the statement that she could not condone overturning the ordinance if it meant someone could come in and buy the Hunter Smith Building, open up a restaurant, and hang a beer sign so the people of the Methodist Church would have to look at it. Where does half the City Council claim to or attend church, including Mrs. Harwell? And what church ended up purchasing the building? I guess Mrs. Harwell ignores the fact that although the motion to vote on it was seconded, it was tabled, and to this day the City Council has never and will never vote on it. But it is okay to hang beer banners on the gazebo of the courthouse lawn directly across from my building and the Methodist Church for the governor's one-shot turkey hunt, or march the Clydesdales around the square and issue legal temporary beer permits on the courthouse lawn and have people walk across the street and drink beer on the church lawn even though the permit was not issued for one block off the square. It is okay to open up the courthouse and have a party and allow drinking on the premises at these events, and it is okay to have people at these events get their beer from the courthouse lawn and walk right past my business drinking beer when I am not allowed as much as one sign advertising the product via their own local laws when I have a permit to distribute it. In fact, as long as you are a nonprofit organization such as the Stars Theater or a political group, you may obtain a temporary permit, hang beer signs all over the square, and have no restrictions on the distribution of beer. Why is that? Why is it that groups like the Ku Klux Klan can obtain a beer permit, hang beer signs, and serve it on the courthouse lawn if they desire, but a person such as myself who invested in this town wants to build a business has their rights violated and has shown such animosity? I reveal all this at a later time. I guess Mrs. Harwell forgets when I came to another work session meeting and told them about the state law that forbids the issuance of temporary permits on public property unless you are in a Class B counties or counties with a population greater than 300,000, of which we are neither. But then they turned around and issued another temporary permit to the Kiwanis Club for the event she mentions in the audio, and most everyone running for election sets up booths and promotes their campaigns, bans play, and beers distributed. I guess Mrs. Harwell forgets the meeting when I addressed the City Council about the distance rules from churches, schools, and playgrounds, of which they completely took off for businesses that have 5,000 square feet of space and 50% of their gross revenues are derived from the sale of groceries, contrary to the state constitution and precedent set in other court cases, only to be told to go get a lawyer by Dan Spear or go behind closed doors and discuss it with the city attorney. Why were these establishments advertising not hindered? Where was Mrs. Harwell in those meetings? Sitting quietly as did all the other City Councilmembers. It is all a matter of public record for anyone to request. In regards to councilmembers, Harwell's additional fictitious claims she makes in the audio to the police, I did not and have not ever shoved or stalked her or any other ladies. I did not hang out at the business next door, B3 Beauty Supply, and wait on her only to run out and mock her. I have bought two suits, a lab coat, hair products, and miscellaneous other items to use as wardrobe and some of the other productions I've worked on. In addition, I am friends with the gentleman that works there, Mr. Martin, and we sometimes go and eat lunch. He can and is willing to testify that Mrs. Harwell's statements are untrue because he was standing five feet away the only time I have ever directed conversation to Mrs. Harwell outside of a City Council meeting unless I talked to her the day she says she ate at my restaurant. In fact, if you listen to the testimony of Mrs. Harwell's coworker, who was on the inside of the building when the exchange took place, the two stories do not coincide, but the coworker did recount the conversation closer than Mrs. Harwell did. I'm sorry Councilmember Harwell does not feel I should have the use of the sidewalks when traveling from my building to other businesses such as Town Square Market, PES, Watson's, Blue Bird, Municipal Building, etc. I have no problem sharing the exchange with Councilmember Harwell and me on that day. On a prior date, I'd been informed by a mutual friend of Councilmember Harwell and myself that she was going to run for mayor. I had not seen any campaign signs, and one day Mr. Martin and I were going to eat lunch at Pizza Hut. He was locking the door, and I was standing on the sidewalk when Mrs. Harwell walks past me to the door, to her office. I turn and said, "I hear you are going to run for mayor." She turns and says, "That's right." I said, "Please don't." She said, "What?" I said, "Please don't." I do not believe you will be the best in that position for the citizens of Pulaski. She said that I did not know her well enough to make that statement. I said I knew the statement she had made in favor of her church over my advertisement of my business. She told me I may not have the enemies I thought I did in the council, and why don't I come in and talk to her? I told her I had no desire to go behind closed doors for conversations that should be held in public venue. She started talking over me, and I ended my conversation by stating I could see no difference in her or Dan Spear's politics, and that was it. Any other time she says I have addressed her or specifically followed her or family members are blatant lies. I did have one conversation with Terry Harwell prior to the 2010 Chili Cook-Off. Coincidentally, it was when he was standing in front of my building campaigning at a Chili Cook-Off a couple of years earlier. I had decided to vote for another candidate, and when Terry extended his card to me, I said, "No, thank you." He said he was running for commissioner in my district. I said, "I know," and I walked on by him and went in my building. I never thought anything else about it. It seems from the audio recording that some of their animosity towards me stems from the fact that I support a candidate they hate. Listen to Terry's claims in the Chili Cook-Off video. The only thing I ever desired was to have the same rights and competitive advantage in marketing my business as everyone else in the city of Pulaski. Now I see I should have done this a long time ago, but better late than never. I will be releasing videos I produced sharing with citizens, conversations I've had with the administration of this city. So many people come into this town and see potential to do business and for growth. When I returned here, where I grew up, to be close to my relatives that were getting older, some suffering from illnesses, I saw great potential for business in this area. But I soon found a few people who are in key positions and more worried about their own shameless self-promotion and benefiting only their friends and family is what has killed this town economically. I know there are many great citizens in this beautiful town and county who want the opportunity to develop business or just have employment opportunities, but that will be for a later time. The following is the audio from the Vicki Harwell interview conducted by Officer Joey Turner. This is the complete interview. You may obtain your own copy by public record if you think I've tampered with it to leave any testimony out or to change what is said. I will also repost the Chili Cook-Off video for you to compare side by side with her statements. If anyone feels I've edited the Chili Cook-Off video where Terry attacks me, please put your money where your mouth is and hire a certified video specialist with verifiable credentials to try to validate your claims. You're going to be wasting your money, but you're welcome to do it. The camera got turned off for about fifteen seconds in the struggle, and then I turned it back on because I thought I needed to continue to document Terry's actions. Now during the struggle, I did use the MF word. I apologize for this, and I was unaware of it until I viewed the video. So you will see me state something inaccurate later in the video when I said I had not used profanity. I'm not claiming to be an angel, and I have used profanity before. I am stating that day in that situation, I would have never used it had I not been physically attacked, and for using it, I do apologize. For fairness, I will also post the audio from my interview with Officer Turner so you may compare the two. Now I'm going to let you listen to the Vicki Harwell interview.
Hey, you doing alright?
Doing good.
How you doing?
Huh?
Terry, they taking the picture of the winner.
I'm just documenting why that they're allowed to violate the fire ordinances, but my business...
Why don't you go check with them? I got me a permit, Bob. You can go check with them.
Did you? Oh, so you get a permit over that?
I am not going to deal with you tonight. You've been ugly with me all the time.
Well, when a person...
What I want you to do is just leave our booth.
Actually...
Yeah, I can take care of it.
Actually, I could stand here on the street.
You ought to get a little...
Now...
Take that out of my face.
I got every right.
You ain't got no right.
Motherfucker, you're about to get knocked down. I got every right to stand right here and film.
You ain't got a right to say what you say.
What did I say?
You don't know what you're talking about.
I got the laws right here that say it's illegal for you to be in...
It ain't legal for you to be talking like you want.
Get away from my dad, please.
The hell am I talking?
You don't know what you're saying, do you?
You seem to be the one...
Get somebody up here.
That's the problem.
He's got you on tape.
Well, you're the one that came off here, see?
Put his cell phone, Tate.
Huh?
He's the one that caused the problem.
You're the one causing the problem?
South Coast at the Chili Cook-Off. There's a guy named Bob... Chris, get him away.
You're about like...
Get back home.
You and Allen Barrett, you're all about alike, two biggest nuts in Giles County.
Well, we'll see about that. We'll see. Now this all would be alleviated if a person, if a person that's sitting on the City Council that's running for mayor that's right here...
I'm not on City Council.
She is.
I'm a...
She is. I don't care about you.
You got nothing to do with it. This is me.
Actually, she does.
I'm a county commissioner.
Yeah, and I know, you're in my district.
What you gonna do about it?
Oh, no, keep on talking. Keep on talking.
Well, he ain't nothing. Saggie.
What'd you call me?
You know what you are.
No, what'd you call me? What did you call me?
My husband is a United States soldier, and you're being a jerk right now.
Listen, don't come up here and just try to do that.
Now what did you call me?
Just stay over here and just start...
Actually, this, this, this...
We're having a good time. We're having a good time. Let's just don't...
Did you see that?
Today's date is November the 19th, 2010. Time is now 8:49. I am here with Ms. Vicki Hastings Harwell. It's her office here in Pulaski, Tennessee. We're going to be discussing an incident that occurred at the Chamber of Commerce Chili Cook-Off involving Mr. Hugh, Mr. Bob Hughes. Ms. Vicki, if you don't mind, just basically just step me through the chain of events that occurred that evening, and then we'll review, we'll go back and discuss that afterward. If you just walk me through that.
Well, we had prepared all day for the Chamber Cook-Off, and I had called the fire department prior to the Cook-Off, several days before, because we had talked about having a fire pit on the square, which is something we had done before and had permitted several years ago, and so that was kind of our intention. And when I contacted the fire department, I was told that I wouldn't need a permit if we did that because the chamber's rain permit would cover the event. So we had already cooked our chili at home, and we had a, I call it a burner, I don't really know what it is, it's a fish cooker we use at home, that's what we use it for. But it had a stock pot of chili with about eight gallons of chili, and it had a new gas tank hooked up to it, and I, you know, I don't know much about hooking tanks up and burners, but all I know is the chili had been cooked at home, and it was on a warm, to warm the chili. That's basically it.
Yes, ma'am.
It weren't even cooking. In fact, it was similar to what the Pulaski Fire Department had on the opposite corner.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that's basically what we were doing, and everybody was out there, family, coworkers. We were having a good time. It had just got underway, and Bob Hughes came up, and the first time I saw him, he walked past me, I was standing out on the edge of the street and talking to someone, and he walked past me, and he walked to within inches of my husband, who was sitting on a stool near the front of Harwell Plant and Williams, stirring the stock pot of chili. And he had his video camera videoing from top to bottom of Terry and our chili setup. And I remember somebody in the crowd saying, "Well, look at there, Terry, they already think you're going to have the winning chili, you know, he's videotaping you," and I knew right away that that was not Bob Hughes' intent. I knew he had come looking for trouble. It was not a new thing. Mr. Hughes has been stalking me since the hot part of summer, I'd say at least since July. He had, he would make it a habit of loitering or hanging out over here at the business next door, 3D Beauty Supply, and when I would come in and out of my office where I work, he had a habit of confronting me and saying ugly things, being loud on the sidewalk, comparing me to Dan Spear, begging me to run for mayor, saying that I was just like Dan Spear, would be no different. I mean, just real rude, abusive...
Was he begging to run or begging not to run? What was he...
Well, he would say, I remember one time, he said, I was getting out of the car and coming into the office, and I remember he approached me. He would make a habit of, if you look at the storefront next door, the windows jut out further than the door, and he would make it a habit of being in that recessed area. And he would come from there and approach me. In other words, when I'd pull in to park to come into my office, I wouldn't see him. So he would approach from that recessed area next door. And one time, I remember that he started out and he was going real silly, "Please, oh, please, oh, please, oh, please, oh, please, do run for mayor." And I looked at him and I said, "I beg your pardon." And at that time, we had only just announced, I mean, you know, it was the beginning of, I guess, summer, you know, if you will, because we qualified in April and the race was just kind of beginning to pull together. And I said, "What are you talking about?" And so he starts to berate me and to tell me how I'm no different than Dan Spear, and I'm this, and I'm bad, and so it turned into a confrontation out on the sidewalk in front of my place of employment. And so I said to him, I said, "You don't know me, you don't know me well enough to be making any of those comments," and he kept on, just kept on, and I said, "Mr. Hughes, if you want to talk to me like an adult, you're welcome to make an appointment with me or come to see me, and we'll sit down and we'll discuss any issues you have." But that's not how he wanted to handle it. So I came on in the office, and my coworker said, "What was that all about?" I mean, she sits right in the front window and, you know, could see some of this. So anyway, that's typical of what I've endured from Bob Hughes everywhere I've seen him throughout the past several months. It even goes back to when there was the last county general election, and my husband was on the ballot, and I was working pole at the rec center, and he came up, and he was mouthing at that time, and I would just walk away from him. So my typical response to Bob Hughes is to walk away. I have never approached his place of business. I have never knowingly approached him to discuss anything. So at the Chili Cook-Off, when I saw him with his camera, I knew there was going to be trouble. And after he videotaped my husband, he came over to where I was standing, and he had a stack of papers, I'd say at least a half inch thick, and I really couldn't tell what they were, and he was waving them in my face within inches of my nose, and he was demanding for me to tell him why, as a city alderman, I thought I could break city ordinances. And so I tried at first a rational approach, and I said, "Mr. Hughes, I've called the fire department, you know, I didn't need any permit, I'm not trying to break the ordinance, blah, blah, blah." I tried to explain to him. It got worse and worse. "Well, you think because you're a city alderman, you can break blah, blah, blah." And I know Mr. Hughes, his game, he feels that everybody on the City Council has ruined him, and that we're the reason for his detriment, I guess, and he has a need to vindicate himself. He is a victim in his mind, and in reality, he victimizes everyone else, in my opinion. But he was waving these papers, and have you ever videotaped anything?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, we've, I've had classes that we have gone to, you know, I've been to video instructor school, and I've been associated with, through the police department.
I have children, grandchildren, and the times that I've tried to videotape, you know what I've realized? I'm so intent on what I'm videotaping that I don't see anything else that goes on, and I've actually missed when I've tried to videotape my son playing ball, for instance, and just videotape him. I miss everything else that's going on because I'm so intent on the videotape, and I think that Mr. Hughes was so intent that night on getting what he wanted on his little camera that he doesn't really realize what all went on around him and how everybody else reacted to what he did. He was so angry and just in your face that people started begging him to leave, and I asked him, "Please, leave." You know, I didn't invite him up here, it was a public event, but he seems to be under the impression that as long as he is on a public sidewalk, he can do anything he wants to do, and he can say anything he wants to say to anybody, and that's not the way I see it. He came here looking for trouble, he kept on, he was in my face. At one point, he had his hand, and I don't know which hand because he was behind me at that point, I was trying to turn and walk away, but he actually had his hand around and on my arm pushing me, okay? That was the first time he touched me. And I turned back around and I said, "Please, leave, just go away." And that's when he kept saying, you know, "It's a public sidewalk, I can do anything I want to, I can be here," you know, and I said, "Not if you're going to create this problem." If you see his little videotape with me on the telephone, that's when I pulled my phone off my belt and I called 911 because I knew then that it was escalating. He wouldn't go away, there were men here, I knew that there was going to be a fight if somebody didn't get there and defuse him. So while I'm trying to call, he shoves me the second time. I've got my bag to him with my camera, my phone to my ear. He shoves me the second time. When he does that, I say, "Terry, you're going to have to handle this." I really thought that Bob Hughes intended to slap me around that night. He'd already had his hands on me twice, and I hear now that he says it was incidental contact. I don't know what he wants to call it, but he had his hands on me twice. In essence, he actually touched me three times. When Terry got up off his stool during all of this, my husband was sitting on the stool against the building, stirring the chili. People were coming to get chili, they were being served. So then when Terry gets up and walks toward us, I turn to Terry, and I'm talking to him, and Bob Hughes shoves me, and I don't know if it was with his chest, his stomach, I don't know what he shoved me in the back with, but he shoves me up against my husband, pushes me, and I think he was trying to get his camera closer to Terry's face is what I think he was doing. I think that Bob Hughes, every move he made that night was to get his camera closer to whatever his subject was, basically. But he wouldn't leave, and he kept on, and he hollered out, he said, he hollered out, "Motherfucker." I remember that, you know, "Motherfucker, I'm going to knock you out." I remember people who were there, like Gerald and Juanita Boyd, an older couple. I just remember everybody just being so astonished that this was going on at this event that was supposed to be fun, you know? And people that were at, that were there kinda began to scatter. But I mean, I didn't think, and when I picked up the phone to call the police and he heard me talking to 911, that's about when he began to wind down and start to walk off. And then, the lady that had the booth next door, um, from Snazzy's, I think's the name of the shop, she came over and tried to intercede. And I remember her, she had a Kleenex or something in her hand, I remember her waving it and telling him, you know, "Just go away, why don't you just go away, we're just having a good time, why don't you just go away," you know? I remember my son trying to say something to him, you know, and I remember his retort was that he was on a public sidewalk or a public street and he can do and say whatever, you know? And so, anyway, eventually, I just came back in the building.
Yes ma'am.
And of course, there were other, I, I mean, you know, kids were running here and there and people were saying this.
The incident with water?
I kept telling Terry not to hit him. I said, "That's a lot, look, that's all he wants, he's been put up to this, it's a setup, you know, don't hit him, let's just try to get out of here, let's just go inside, let's defuse him." So, we were actually on the sidewalk and Terry was getting a drink of water. And I remember Bob Hughes just carrying on and on and on. So, I may have actually been the one that spilled the water because I remember just taking his arm for us to come inside the building, I remember us coming inside. The only other thing I remember about that is the lady at the booth next door, I remember the front of her shirt was wet. So, I think that she may have actually been the one hit with, with the water. But once I had called the police, Bob Hughes left on foot.
Where did he go, did he go back?
He walked north, that's all I know. From where we were. Of course, there was hundreds of people, I mean, I couldn't see them, all I know is they walked north, you know?
Let's, uh, let's go back to the part where he walks up, if you, and, and look at this for just a second. Uh, he, we know he was angry about the, the, the city council situation, he's upset about that and he feels like that he's been a victim of the city.
For how many years? You know, I've been trying to think about that, it started before I even was on the city council, six years ago.
It, it goes back several years, uh, about his business and his beer permit. I think that's, that's what he's upset about.
As I recall, he got his beer permit, but he couldn't put signs in the windows. Now, that's the way I recall it. I could be wrong, that's what I recall.
Oh, and I did talk with, with Chief Thompson and them and verify, they said, "Hey, you called and verified that." And, and Chief Thompson said, "Hey," he said, "You know, it's a one-night event." He said, "I didn't feel like that it was a problem." You know, he said, "Fire, the firemen and firefighters were gonna be there at the event." And he just says, you know, he, he didn't feel like that the, uh, the burners with the cooking would be a problem.
You know, if, if that's what Mr. Hughes wants to get me for, is that part?
No, I don't think that, I'm just saying that that is one of his, his arguments.
I know, but what I'd like to say is this, Kiwanis had an event not long ago and there were people roasting peanuts with the burners, I saw them at their event and cooking pork rinds or pork skins. I mean, every, every event that is permitted by city council that has food, they cook at that event. I mean, I thought that was part of the permitting process.
Yes ma'am. Well, I'll be honest with you, Ms. Vicki, I'm not exactly totally familiar with how those, those permits go, you know, the parade permits and things. But, uh, when he comes up to you, he walks by you, from my notes here, he walks past you and goes over to Terry. And according to what you told me, he films up and down Terry there stirring the chili.
Within inches of him, excuse me just a minute, yeah, okay. Hey, uh, vertigo's better, can I call you right back? All right, you just go, bye.
Then, as he walks off, someone in the crowd who, I, I believe we've identified is Mr. Adams and Margaret Adams, makes a comment, "Hey Terry, they're, they're already filming the winner."
I agree with that, except that at that point, Bob hadn't walked off, he's still there filming.
Right.
Just up and down, up and down, you know?
He's, he's in the area between you, listen, would it be safe to say that Terry is here in, in front of the building that's chili?
Against the wall.
Right. You're standing on the, on the sidewalk.
The edge of the street.
And then the Adamses are here in front of the car. So, Mr. Hughes is somewhere between you, Terry, and the Adamses. He's got paperwork in his hands, which I guess we've, we know that to be some type of ordinances or laws or something to that effect, um. And when Mr. Adams makes this comment, what does Mr. Hughes say? What, what happens at that point?
That's when he said, and, and I don't remember verbatim, but that's when he said something smart aleckly like, "That's not it at all, I'm here to say why a city councilman thinks she can break the, the city ordinance." And that's when he's waving this paper within inches of my nose.
So, that's not verbatim, but that's-
That's pretty much, that was his opening or his opportunity to then start to attack me for breaking city ordinance.
When he does that, he in turns, says that, and that's when you tell him, say, "Look, Bob, I've got, I've checked on this, I've got a permit or whatever." And then he turns around and says, "Well, you've got, you're telling me you can do this and that and we're at this point right now, what happens at that point?"
I think I kept explaining to him that I, I wasn't telling him anything, that I had called the fire department. I think I even told him that I talked to Captain Collins and that I was told I didn't need a permit. And I mean, he, he's just, he's adamant about shoving his camera in my face and with the other hand, he's flailing these papers around my face.
How, how close do you think that the camera was to your face when he's at that point?
I could've, he was in what I call my personal space, I could've reached out and touched him.
Would you say, and that your personal space was an arm's reach or half an arm's reach or, or closer than that?
Well, when he was waving the papers, they were within inches of my nose. When he was, um, touching me with his arm, I mean, I don't know how else to say it, man, he was right there on me, you know?
I'm not to that, at that point, I see. He's done that, and then that's when you say, uh, or you ask Terry to come over and talk to him? Or what, what happens at that point?
He continues, "I'm standing in the edge of the street." At no time did I approach him, he came to me.
Yes ma'am.
And he's doing all this mess about the city ordinance and why I think I can break it and, you know, blah, 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 'cause I'm on the city council. And when he has his hands on me the second time, I figure that he's just gonna flatten me right there in front of everybody. And so, that's when I said, "Terry, you know, can, can you handle this?" I think's the way I said it. And Terry got up and started to get off the stool and walked toward me.
So, he's touching you with these papers and ca, he's got papers in his hand, camera in his hand, and he's, he's touched you?
The papers never touched me.
Okay.
In the nose.
Right.
When he put his hand on whichever, I don't know which hand, he was behind me at that point. So, I don't know which hand he had his camera in, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
I had turned, but when he grabbed my arm, it was the arm that had the papers.
Okay.
The hand, it was his hand that had the papers in it. And I think he was just trying to shove me aside so he could get the picture he wanted, is what I think he was doing.
Get the what now?
Get the picture he wanted on his video camera. I think he was trying to just shove me. Of course, he's much taller than I am, so a lot of his videoing is going on over the top of my head.
The reason I'm asking you this is, you know, that part, at some point in time, the camera is shut off. And what I'm trying to determine is this, did this happen, okay? He says, "Motherfucker, I'm gonna knock you out, and forgive me for using that word."
Shouts, well, you got to say what it, I mean-
But, he says that and the camera shuts off, okay? At one point in time, okay, you've seen the video, I've seen the video.
I have not seen all the video, I refuse to watch his, his creation. I have not seen all the video.
Okay.
John Wolfe sent the video around to various people.
Right.
And I saw, the only portion I saw was where I had my phone to my ear and my back to him.
Well, let me explain to you what happened on that part. The video was taken and it was downloaded, what he had straight from his camera, okay? Into evidence, that's in evidence part. I've watched that, um. The part that, uh, I guess what I'm trying to determine is, is this, when he was touching you, was that while the camera was off or was it while it was on, or are you unsure, do you know?
I have no way of knowing. You know, when you're operating a video camera, you can push the button and choose to record, not record whenever you want to.
Yes ma'am.
So, I mean, how can I say he was recording or not recording? All I know is he had his hands on me twice and he pushed me once. From what I saw, when I had the phone to my ear and then somebody said the camera started going off or whatever, I figured that's when he actually shoved me up against my husband.
Okay, well, let's step in through this. When, when he says, "Motherfucker, I'm gonna knock you out," was that when you were between Terry or?
I was between them, I had my back to him, to Bob Hughes.
Okay.
And I had my face to Terry, and that's about when he shoved me into Terry.
Okay.
That was the third time his body actually touched mine. But I don't think it was his hands, I think he was walking toward Terry and, and just pushed me.
So, your back was to Bob and you were facing Terry, and at that point in time, that's when you were shoved in to your husband? Um, at, at any point in time, did you retaliate or push back or anything at that time?
I begged and pleaded with Bob Hughes to leave.
Okay, so at no point in time-
At no point did I touch Bob Hughes, and at no point do I want to touch Bob Hughes.
I understand, I'm just, it's, I'm asking that to, to cover everything this far. Because that, you know, that'll end up, be a question that will end up being asked down the road. So, at no point in time did you, Bob Hughes never was touched by you or what did?
I never saw Bob Hughes touched by anyone on the square that night. I think everybody saw him as a loose cannon and warned him to leave.
All right, we are at the point where you were between, um, uh, your husband and Bob. What happens after that?
I think that's when the lady at the booth next to us comes up. And she has a, best I remember is a rag or Kleenex or something.
Yes ma'am.
And she was waving it at him and I remember her saying, "We're just having a good time." Or, "We're trying to have a good time" or something like that, you know, "Please just leave, please just go away." And from what I remember, she was just like in front of his camera with that rag, just saying, just trying to shoo him away, "Go away." You know, I remember that, and I remember that's the time that we walked up on the sidewalk.
You mentioned just a few minutes ago that, uh, you reached for your cellphone to call the police. Was there some, what happened prior to those changes there? Did he, did he push you again or anything of that?
He'd already had his hands on me twice. And that's when I reached to call 911.
Okay, now, when he had his hands on you twice, that was when he had the papers just mere inches from your nose? And, uh, after the, Mr. Adams had said, "They're taking a picture of the winner," and he had the papers. That's when he had touched you those two times, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The phone, and that's when you called the police?
The 911, so I called.
Uh, and at this point, where were you at this point when you called 911, I guess?
Standing in the edge of the street.
Okay, and where was Mr. Hughes in relation to that?
Where he had walked up to me, standing in the edge of the street, he was behind me.
Yes ma'am.
I was facing north and he was behind me.
And where was Mr. Harold?
Walking in front of me, coming, coming to stand in front of me, facing south.
This whole time, it's, I'd say Terry was upset and you were standing between Terry and-
In retrospect, Terry never was upset, I've seen Terry upset before. He, he, you know, I wish that I'd never said, "Terry, will you take care of this?" But I really thought Bob Hughes was about to plaster me right there in front of everybody, okay? And Terry calmly got up off the stool. I mean, I remember him saying, "I, I can," or "I will," or something like that, he calmly got up off the stool, he was walking toward me. And that's when Bob Hughes shouted out, "Come on, motherfucker, I'll knock you out." Well, at that point, people started scattering, you know?
So, when Terry got up off the stool and started walking towards Bob, that's when he hollered that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um. At any point in time, well, you said that you didn't see Bob, him anywhere?
I never saw the men touch each other at all. They would've had to have flattened me to have touched each other because I was in between them. At all times when they were close, I was in between them.
Okay. I think I've just about got everything, I'm just trying to run, run everything through my mind.
But I was afraid, you know, Charlie's a big man.
Yes ma'am.
And I was afraid Charlie was probably fixing to step in and flatten him, I didn't want him to be in the middle of this.
Who, who's?
Charlie Adams.
Oh, okay.
The guy you just mentioned. You know, they're good friends of ours, they don't live here, they didn't have a clue who Bob Hughes was. They've been to these events before, they know their front, fun, you know, they, nobody was expecting this confrontation that night. I was afraid Charlie was gonna get involved, I didn't want him to get involved and have charges. My son-in-law was there, I was afraid he might get involved, my son was there, but I think he had come in the office at that time.
Yes ma'am.
Coworkers, I mean, there were just so many people there that evening that I didn't want to get involved. And I could see this thing getting out of hand quickly, which is why I called 911.
You did the right thing, calling, I mean-
We couldn't defuse it.
Now, we've got Terry and you and Bob, and you've called the police at this point. Just cover the water incident again real quick. Did, and this is just a simple question, did, did you see anyone throw water on Mr. Hughes? Or what, what was it?
Terry had a cup, when the lady's waving the Kleenex or the rag or whatever she had in her hand, she's all in front of Bob doing that, asking him to leave, "We're just having a good time, leave." That's when Terry and I turned and walked and stepped back up on the sidewalk. And there was a table set up on the edge of the sidewalk near the street. And it had a cooler, like a five-gallon igloo cooler of ice water in it, okay? That's when Terry was getting a drink, we, he was actually getting a drink, we were standing there, okay? And he was getting a drink. And Bob just keeps on and on and pushing this lady, and finally, she steps aside, or I don't know if he shoves her, I don't have a clue if he put his hands on her, I don't know, I really don't. But he just keeps coming, and I remember at that point, I pulled Terry by the arm, he had, he had, I jerked him by the arm and I said, "Come on, you know, he's just trying to get you to hit him, he's trying to try and wreck the election," that's what, and I'm convinced in my heart of hearts that somebody put Bob Hughes up to this and that he did it intentionally, which is fine. But, you know, I'm just saying, the only place I saw water go was on this woman. She had water on the front of her shirt.
Well, did-
Did my husband attack Bob Hughes by water, that's laughable, if that's what you're asking me?
No ma'am, no ma'am, I'm just, what I was- No, ma'am, no, ma'am, I'm just, what I was gonna ask you was, was it, did somebody fall, or was it, what, how did the water get thrown? Is that's what I'm asking?
I don't know if he fell or not. I remember, I remember pulling on his arm, and there were small Styrofoam cups. I remember pulling on his arm and saying, "Let's go inside."
Mm-hmm.
Where the water went, I don't know. I saw the lady with water on her shirt. Terry and I came inside this building.
Okay.
And as we were coming in inside this building, I saw Bob Hughes walking across this side intersection.
So you didn't see Terry throwing any water?
I didn't see Terry throwing any water.
(sigh) Miss Harrell, I think I've got, I've covered everything with you. Uh, is there anything you would like, you know, wanna add, or is it?
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
Do y'all investigate every incident this closely, or just because I'm on the city council, and Bob Hughes is after the city council? I mean, that's the question I really have.
Well, this is the, this is, I've talked with Mr. Hughes and asked him how he wants to handle this, you know, if he wants to seek it.
Mm-hmm.
And he's been adamant about doing something about this.
Oh, really?
And that, that's the reason why that we have, have followed up on it.
Uh-huh.
My inten- our intention is to just do the report, and we'll give it to the district attorney's office, and if they feel like that there's something there,
Mm-hmm.
then I'll, I'll be in touch with you and let you know how things were gonna, or go out, and I told Chris the same thing.
Uh-huh. So does Bob, just out of curiosity, is Bob Hughes aware that?
Yeah, is he aware that, that, that he, that you?
That he instigated this, and that he assaulted me? I mean, that's what I'm curious about.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sure that he, he, he's aware of that. I mean, because he, if you look at this whole thing, you know, Bob came down this way, but still, you know, he's, he's still adamant about following through with this, and, you know, I've talked to him, the chief has talked to him, and, uh, we've asked him, hey, you know, how do you wish to move up, move forward with this, you know? We're thinking that, hey, he may just wanna document this and, 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 and move on, but he's very adamant about moving forward and, and trying to do something about it.
Well, he's a vigilante.
Mm-hmm.
And he is videotaping everything with my family and my grandchildren, but, you know, that's, that's getting real close to stalking, in my opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm about tired of him stalking me. I have not approached him at all for anything and don't intend to.
So you've never, uh, and, and I know, I'm asking this question, at no point in time have you followed Mr. Hughes around?
Never in my life have I followed Bob Hughes. His uncle that died, Terry Hughes, when Bob Hughes first opened his business,
Mm-hmm.
Terry Hughes brought a flyer by here, and Terry was a commissioner, and I had respect for Terry, and myself and a couple of friends went down to eat at his establishment. I've been there one time. I have never been back at that place, on his property, or around him.
The reason I'm asking that is if it, if that is the case, we need to know about that too, uh, about the stalking part.
Mm-hmm.
So at no, no point in time have you ever had any contact with Mr. Hughes i- in that respect? Anything, any contact that you've ever had with Mr. Hughes has been strictly professional in reference to the city council or something of that nature?
I have no personal contact with Bob Hughes at all. I have never approached him to talk about anything. He has approached me, I'd say, at least on five occasions on the sidewalk out front, to try to get into an argument, a confrontation. As I said, he seems convinced that he can do and say anything he wants to on a public sidewalk.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, your coworker, which is Ms. Harney, is that correct?
Harney.
Uh, do you have any issues if I took a statement from her while I'm here? Would that be a problem, or?
I don't know what she saw as far as chili cook-off. She was sitting, she and some other women and children were sitting on hay bales near the fire, uh...
Well, I just wanna make sure that, that if, if, if somebody, if somebody has seen that you were assaulted, I, I wanna get that information and where I can put that with this, because, you know, if you, with that information, that, that, that could be helpful.
She has not seen a physical assault.
Okay. Uh...
I, I don't think she could've seen it that night. It was dark, and there were people between where she was sitting, if you're talking about the chili cook-off.
Yes, ma'am.
She, there was hay bales, I don't know how to describe it for the tape, but there were hay bales right on the very corner, under a tent.
Yes, ma'am.
And I remember that Ms. Harney was sitting on those hay bales under that tent with Beth Wash and a couple other people, and some kids running around.
Mm-hmm.
She could not have seen, because the corner of the building and some other things would've been in her line of view to have seen what Bob Hughes did.
Yes, ma'am.
That night. Now, she has seen him approach me on the sidewalk.
Well, that, that would be helpful too. Uh, like I said, I, while I'm here, if that's not a problem, I'd like to get a, a statement from her on that, and we can, we won't even just, we won't even stop recording, and I'll just, uh, talk with her about if she's okay with that.
Do you want me to call her back here and ask her?
Yeah, just ask her if she's fine with that. I, I don't wanna put her on any kind of spot or any bad thing.
Hey, we're talking about, um, Bob Hughes and some of the things that's happened, and we're talking about back in the summer, whenever he would confront me when I pulled up in front of the building, you know? You recall the, the day that he was doing the loud talking and all that, and I came in, and what we were talking about? I, I don't remember the, the exact date either. Um, Officer Turner just wanted to ask you some questions about, you know, what you saw about him approaching and things like that. Can you come back here? Okay. She was saying she don't remember the exact date, I don't either.
Uh, as far as the statement, and I have to ask this question, as far as the statements you've given to me this morning, is all the information that you've given to me, uh, the truth?
It's the truth as far as I know at Officer Turner. Things happened so quickly that night. There were people trying to come up and get chili, and they were seeing that there was an altercation going on. They were leaving, I mean, I can kinda recall who some of them were. They came in, they came out, you know, it was just
Right.
hundreds of people that evening.
This is your statement as you recall it?
As I recall it, absolutely.
Okay.
But I have no doubt that he had his hands on me.
Yes, ma'am.
Knowing whatsoever.
Okay. Uh, do you want me to, uh, can we just step into the, uh, conference room there, or are you?
Or I can move.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Hi, Sheila.
Hello.
I'm following up on this, uh, incident with Mr. Hughes, uh, and just so you're aware, we're doing a recorded statement. I did a recorded statement with, uh, uh, Ms. Harrell. Uh, can you tell me a little bit about what you, I, I know there's been some things here over the summer when Mr. Hughes has been around. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Uh, the only thing that I saw was, one day she pulled up, and he was like, I think he maybe like walking up, or he, he was either next door, and he was, and I heard him say, um, something about, "No, no, please don't run from me," or something like that, "You just be like the others," or something like that. And it's just going on and on, and she was just telling, you know, "Come talk to me, you know, I can talk to you, you don't know nothing about me, blah, blah, blah," and that was it, and that's the only thing I heard him say, and they were going back and forth, and, um, that was it that day. And that's the only thing I ever just really, you know, if, any other time, I hadn't been around if he stopped and took that door.
How about it to chili cook-off?
When I, he came by and he spoke to me, and I spoke to him, and after we spoke, and, um, he went up, he was female or whatever, when I heard Kay say, "Go get Chris, go get Chris," and, and Chris came out, and they were all talking, whatever, I walked the other way, 'cause I didn't wanna be part of it. So, I would've walked by.
So you didn't see any physical confrontation?
Uh-uh, 'cause I was on this side over here. I had walked by, and I had helped somebody get some chili, then I walked back this way, and I went walking around the square. I didn't wanna be no part of it.
So you left?
I did.
Did you see, at any point in time, did you see Mr. Hughes assault Ms. Harrell? Or, or do anything to Ms. Harrell?
I didn't.
Okay. At any point in time, did you see Mr. Harrell do anything to Mr. Hughes?
Nope.
All right. Uh, how about, uh, Ms. Washam? Did she stick around to see anything? Beth Washam blow up?
Oh, Beth Washam, Beth Washam. Um, I don't know, I didn't see, I was sitting over there, I'm trying to think who was over there with me. When he walked by, I think I was sitting by myself, and everybody was like toward that way. And Beth was over there earlier with me, but I don't know, I don't know if she was over there in the middle of it or not. I don't remember, 'cause, I mean, like I said, I was not trying to get in it, so I went the other way.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't know. I don't remember seeing her.
Okay. So, cover all this again, you didn't see any of the confrontation, uh, the only thing that you was asked to do was to go inside and get Chris?
I would, she, she was just hollering it. She wouldn't necessarily holler at me.
Okay.
She was just hollering, and I heard her say it.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, and then I was like, "What's going on?" or whatever, and that's when I like, you know, saw he, and he came out, and then he was talking, he was also right there, and that's when I went the other way.
So you didn't see any water being thrown or anything like that?
I didn't, mm-mm.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you talking with me.
No problem.
Uh, I can, yeah, just go get her, and, and we'll go from there, see if she has anything else. Hi, Ms. Harrell, at this time, I'm gonna start the recorder, if there's anything else we need to, are we good with everything? Is this, anything else you need, would like to add or ask, or?
I don't have anything else to add. The only thing that I will say is I wish that Bob Hughes, if he feels he's been wronged, would come and talk to the whole city council instead of following me or any one of us. I think that his actions are going to lead to trouble for himself or somebody else.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it, it's gotten to the dangerous point.
Yes, ma'am. Well, if that, um, I'm gonna stop the recorder at this time, and this is gonna conclude our statement with, uh, Ms., Ms. Harrell. Hey, you doing all right?
Doing good. How you doing? Huh? How you doing? Terry, they're taking a picture of the winner.
I'm just documenting, uh, why that they're allowed to violate the fire ordinances, but my, my business is...
Why don't you go check with them? I got me a permit, Bob. You can go check with them.
Oh, so, so you get a permit over that?
I am not gonna deal with you tonight. You've been ugly with me all the time.
Well, I, when a person?
What I suggest you do is just leave our face.
Actually? Actually, I can stand here on the street.
You wanna get out, get on.
Now.
Take that, take that out of my face.
I got every right.
You ain't got no right.
Motherfucker, you're about to get knocked down.
I got every right to stand right here and film.
You ain't got a right to say what you say.
What did I say?
You don't know what you're talking, fuck.
I got the, I got the laws right here that say it's illegal for you to be in.
It ain't legal for you to be talking like you want.
The hell am I talking?
You don't know what you said, don't listen.
You seem to be the one
Get somebody up here.
That's, that's the problem.
He's got you on tape.
Well, you're the one that came off here, see?
Put his cell phone taped.
Huh?
He's the one that caused the problem.
You're the one causing the problem?
South first at the chili cook-off.
Nut, biggest nut, Jaws.
Chris, get him away.
You about like, you and Alan Barrett, y'all about alike, two biggest nuts in Jaws camp.
Well, we'll see about that, we'll see. Now, this all, this all would be alleviated if a person, if a person that's sitting on the city council that's running for mayor that's right here.
I'm not on the city council.
She is.
I'm a, I'm a...
She is, I don't care about you.
You ain't got nothing to do with it, this is me.
Actually, she does.
I'm a county commissioner.
Yeah, and I know, you're in my district.
What you gonna do about it?
Oh, no, keep on talking, keep on talking.
Well, he ain't nothing, sag it.
What'd you call me?
You know what you are.
No, what'd you call me?
You know what you are.
What did you call me?
My husband is a United States soldier, and you're being a jerk right now.
Listen, don't come up here and just try to do that, no.
Now, what did you call me?
Don't come up here and just start...
Actually, this, this, this...
We're having a good time. We're having a good time, let's just don't.
Did you see that?